I will be calling five names at a time. First is Sister Estella, Rabbi Bradenberg, Enri Marini, Stacy Cigar Bowlinger, and Worship Scientology.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All available items, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Jesus loves you. He is the ultimate attorney to save your soul. The loophole is to repent and ask for forgiveness.
This is not on the agenda, so please stick to the agenda items or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Okay, so we've asked you to get on to the agenda items. You have not done so. You have one minute for general public comment.
Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are thou amongst women,
Speaker, I need you to connect this to something that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So if you do not do so, then you're going to forfeit the rest of your time. So just please, connect-
Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be.
Mr. President, this does not appear to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. I've asked politely for the speaker to connect it to something and has not done so. Would you like the speaker to forfeit their time?
God bless you. God bless America. Thank you.
When it comes to general public comment, it is broad, but you still need to speak to something that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
Yeah, I-
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
I brought the cash box for item regarding budget and finances because this is the only way you steal money is that you bring a box or a brown bag so that these criminals here-
So, Mr. Herman, this sounds like general public comment. Which item are you speaking to?
I'm talking about the budget, innovations and committees. On October 9th, October 9th, that's item 26, 27. So I am on topic, Mr. Grope. So, listen, Mr. Pumpkin, you know, I'm just trying to talk about the LLC versus the City of Los Angeles on a matter that arises from the airports. That's all.
Then speak to that and not the budget generally.
But you can't tell my mind-
Please continue or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Look, I'm not trying to be vulgar. I'm not trying to be offensive or abrasive, but you tend to push my mental health.
Appreciate that, and you can speak to that. You can insult me during general public comment if you'd like, but for now, please stick to the agenda items.
Listen, I suffer from a disability, sir. I suffer from a disability, and I find you very racist and discriminatory towards my personality. We have a conflict here? I don't believe so, so let me go on to my item. Shut the fuck up, please. So, yeah, when it comes to situations like what we're experiencing, folks, like, for example, stay on topic. Okay, let's go to CD1. CD1 off of the South Avenue is property at 147 South Avenue. This case involving 750119 regarding the assessor, you know, I find rent rape escrow offensive. While people are living on our streets and your dumb, dumb mayor gets up there and makes that offensive speech about homelessness and the crisis of veterans, I think it's time again that Judge Carter have you audit and find out what the fuck is happening with this West Sunset Boulevard case as well. Because people shouldn't be stripped of their homes. You're just creating more homelessness. You're still creating a crisis on vulgarity of homelessness. I call it vulgarity because in my mind, Mr. Grope, in my mind, that's how I picture it. And if I can't be myself, a fucking faggot, then who am I supposed to be? Who am I supposed to be? Mommy Ramen Noodle talked about unisex. I'm unisexual. What's wrong with that?
Okay, so again, I need you to get back on topic or I'm going to move you to general.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I'm just pointing out that due to the fact that I'm disabled and you take advantage of me, you should learn to stop that immediately. This is my city. This is my state. We run this country.
Okay, so general public comment.
So ladies and gentlemen, you've known me for years. You've known me time after time that I've been a very popular person in Los Angeles. Matter of fact, I call myself the mayor. And Smoke and Scan is the pro tempore mayor of my condition. They support me, and I thank them for that. Hooty-hoo! However, when Weezer, Wesson, Englander, and Tom LeBonge forced me into homelessness while I was at home having a mental breakdown and lost my life of living in Boyle Heights, you are the cause of it. So don't reflect me as a bad person. I never was a bad person. You can read everything on YouTube about me, and a matter of fact, it's all fucking true. Fuck you, Grope.
So while we're waiting for the next speaker to come up, I would just remind anybody who is experiencing homelessness or would like services, including the last speaker, just let the sergeants know and we can see if there's somebody who can talk to you.
Yeah, give me my fucking medication.
Please, please do not interrupt this meeting, Mr. Herman, but I mean it genuinely. If you would like assistance, please let the sergeants know.
You have so many people here today all protesting the fact that Heidi Soto is a corrupt piece of shit who colludes with Scientology to protect Chamos. All right, she's under investigation thanks to me. You have me to thank for that. Look me in the fucking eyes. I tell you that the chief trial counsel of California State Bar is investigating her ass, and so is the City Ethics Commission, and next will be the feds knocking on your door. We have receipts. We have events, especially you, Deleon. Look at me in the eyes as I'm talking to you right now. This isn't a fucking joke, all right? You have people in this council chamber that are protecting Chamos, and we know all about it. We see you. The world sees you. We do not forgive. We do not forget. You have me to thank for that, Heidi. I also own your name, Heidi Soto. I own your name too, Karen Bass. Do not ever fucking forget me. I will protest outside for it comes to it. And Hugo, you piece of shit, you have no fucking spine, and you left the room yesterday as those chalk and emotions particularly pertaining to your district. You're next on my list. All right, you're on my shit list, so fuck you too, Hugo.
Good morning. I would like to speak on everything. I'll start with item number 15. I am here to support this property, 2239 South Alsace Avenue. It's because this property provide a lot of community services, and then whenever people do not have enough food, they go to this property for help. Whenever people do not have access to clean water, when their council member do not respond to their water request, they come to this community. They came to this property, and then the property, landowners, and then the tenants in there, they have been working collaboratively to provide more drinking water, to provide more non-expired food to the community, especially for the people experiencing homeless like myself.
So, Speaker, which item are you speaking to? You mentioned 15, but 15 is a REAP item. It's a rent escrow item.
Right, so I'm here to support this property. So, next one is item 16. Again, I hear you. I hear you. Mr. Attorney, this is about rent escrow account program, okay? And then I'm here to support this property, 2857 East Cincinnati Street. It's because the important, this property is one of the most important property in the City of Los Angeles. Why is that? Because it provide healthcare to Los Angelinos. So when people who do not have access to Medicare, who people do not have access to medication, to Tylenol, to painkillers, they came this property for assistance. That's the reason why I am here to support this property. And then even though this is about rent escrow account, because I am here to support removing this property from that account. So that's the connection between my general, between my public comment, that how it relates and connects to this agenda item. And then now, next one is item number 17. It's about rent escrow account program. I hear you. You don't have to remind me. I'm here to support this property, to remove this property from that escrow account. The reason is this property support our LAPD. This property support public safety. So whenever people who are experiencing domestic violence, people who are experiencing rape, who are people are victim of the sexual trafficking on Figueroa Street, they were able to come to this property for help. Because the council member doesn't help, who is going to help our community who are victimized by the criminals on the street? No, our council member? No. Mayor? No. But this property, yes. I'm glad, I'm so proud to call this property my home. It's because I received so many peer support after being raped in Figueroa for numerous times. Now, continue to my general public comment. Amo a las personas transgénero en Los Angeles.
I love transgender people in Los Angeles.
Apoyo las actividades transgénero en Los Angeles.
I support transgender activity in Los Angeles.
Amo a todos los miembros transgénero del consejo.
I love all the transgender members on the council.
Porque no tenemos ningún miembro transgénero del consejo.
Why don't we have any transgender members on the council?
Esto es discriminación de género.
This is gender discrimination.
Necesitamos más representación transgénero en el consejo de la ciudad.
We need more transgender representation on the city council.
Todos deberían ser transgénero en Los Angeles.
Everyone should be transgender in Los Angeles.
Mi padre es una persona transgénero.
My father is a transgender person.
Así que, así que, mi padre es mi madre.
Which makes my father my mother.
Mi madre es una persona transgénero.
My mother is a transgender person.
Así que, mi madre es mi padre.
So that makes my mother my father.
Todos en mi familia son transgénero.
Everyone in my family is transgender.
Amo a mi familia transgénero.
I love my transgender family.
Necesitamos más personas transgénero in Los Angeles.
We need more transgender people in Los Angeles.
Amamos a los oficiales de policía transgénero.
We love transgender police officers.
And before the next speaker begins, just as a reminder again, to anybody who is experiencing homelessness, including the last speaker, if you let us know which district you are currently residing on or if you need assistance, please let the sergeants know. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items, please, and general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
Thank you. The rent escrow account program, otherwise known as REAP, is implemented when landlords are too negligent to keep their end of the bargain on their own unit's lease and city code. So then what happens to the tenant's rent money? It goes into an account and sits in there waiting for the negligent landlord to restore necessities, but then what? REAP, REAP, REAP doesn't seem right. What we need is a break for the tenant if their unit's not right. Why should a landlord fill up their pocket if they don't hold up their end of the contract? REAP, REAP, REAP. I've got a fun idea, council. How about a rent freeze for any tenant in a unit currently under REAP? It could help everybody if tenants could keep their money. I'm not kidding. Really, really, really. REAP, REAP, REAP doesn't seem right. What we need is a break for the tenant if their unit's not right. Why should a landlord fill up their pocket if they don't hold up their end of the contract? REAP, REAP, REAP. If you want to close these REAP accounts, that's okay with me. But why can't the tenants get something for lacking habitability? REAP, 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 REAP. REAP is a fucking landlord giveaway. It's really just fucking over a tenant who doesn't have habitability in their unit. They don't get a break. They just get to put their rent money in a secret account that the landlord gets access to once they've restored whatever it is in their unit. So I mean, you know, if, when I worked in restaurants, if you ordered something, say, a steak and mashed potatoes and a glass of wine, and I brought you the mashed potatoes and some water, do you think you should still have to pay me for the steak and the wine if I promised to get it to you in a few weeks? That doesn't make any sense. You would expect to not have to pay for any of the meal if it wasn't what you ordered, right? And if tenants are at a loss because they're lacking what's in their contract, I don't understand why landlords get to keep that money. So I'll move on to general public comment now. Yesterday was quite the display of indignance from this body. It's quite amazing how Nithia went from making statements to the LA Times about how unfit Kevin DeLeon is to lead, and now she seconds his motions. She's glad to have him on committees. She won't call a point of order when the president is acting indignantly towards the public. Speaking of which, Marquise and Unicez are having a nice little chat here. Fuck this guy. Fuck you, Kevin. Fuck your Dodgers jacket. Who paid for that? And by the way, who are these people over here that Kevin is shaking hands with? Are these lobbyists? I don't know who these people are, but there's a certain type of person that when they come through, they get first-class treatment, and then all the council body likes to schmooze with them. Are they lobbyists? I would like to know who you guys are. Shout out to Richard Serrano and Richard Hop. Thank you for lunch and Taco Tuesday.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Yeah, my name is Yaritza Gonzalez, and I'm doing general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Yaritza Gonzalez, and I'm here on behalf of Garesan, the Central American Resource Center. We wanted to bring to your attention that the immigrant community is concerned about the appointment of John McDonnell as the LAPD Chief of Police. During McDonnell's tenure as the Los Angeles County Sheriff from 2014 to 2018, there were entanglements between the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department with ICE to transfer immigrants to arrest, detention, and deportation. As a result, families were separated, not at the border, but right here in Los Angeles. The City of Los Angeles can ensure that its resources, property, and personnel are not being utilized for any federal immigration enforcement by passing a sanctuary ordinance. The sanctuary ordinance would make Los Angeles a true sanctuary city, completely prohibiting ICE transfers, as LA County did in September of 2020. Los Angeles must no longer continue to contribute to the separation of thousands of Angelino families.
Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've been asking for quite some time who's in charge, and I've been reviewing the 2022 recording that LA Times, the audio. It's quite interesting. On the 37th minute, our current councilwoman is brought up, and the entire duration of that conversation is about what the interests of her mentors are. And for 10 years now, I've been doing consultation work with nonprofits, small businesses, and community members, and I charge for that. The work that was stolen from me, June 20th, June 24th, by CD1 is inappropriate, and I want to have some understanding as the closed sessions and all these wonderful agenda points that you are not making public. We can see the malice tendencies that is taking place. I just want to make you aware that I see you.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Yes, thank you, criminal. Yes, so let's see here. Let's see what items do we have to speak on today here. Can I speak on number 15? Let's see. Let me ask Bob.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We'll get to the agenda. Okay, let's see here. CD number 10, Fox CD number 10. That's that unelected cunt. We don't want the cunt hunt. We don't want her to be winning elections, so we don't want this. But it's from the REAP program. And then 14, CD 14, and number 16. In honor of the late Fernando Valenzuela, we will support Kevin's motion today on item 16. Yes. Then we have number 17. CD 5, Katie fucking cunt Yaroslavsky on South MS Drive. That's a nice place to live. The REAP has been canceled. Thank you. And again, Kevin giving back money on CD 14 to landlords. Thank you again. But look, we have Nithia Roman. We have a CD 4 update. Noodle, 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 noodle. Yes, that's right, people. You heard it right. Nithia giving in to landlords, devouring her vow of socialism to the Communist Party. Yes, look at Hugo Stalin right now. He's having a headache over this. Yes, it's true. She's selling out. She's selling out, Hugo, but I have hope for you. And then we get to that rotten little Tracy Beach Park, or whatever name she's using lately. You know, the one with the new expensive pretty handbag. Oh, and this episode is brought to you by Coach for all your handbag needs. Okay, so number 20.
All right, so that is not on the agenda. I need you to stick to the agenda. I'm going to move you to general public.
Okay, just let me get to 21. You can shut the fuck up and I can speak, okay? So now we get to CD 1. That's on topic. Let's see here. Unicez. Yes, okay. So we have Avenue 58. I drove through there last night, Unicez. I was on that boulevard. Oh, let's give it a hand. Yes. Now, the question that I have for Unicez is, if I see you at the Dodger game Friday night or Saturday, did you pay for that ticket?
So this is not on the agenda? Please stick to the agenda. I'm going to move you to general.
Yes. Okay, number 22. You can shut the fuck up and I can speak. On a CD 13 motion from Hugo Stalin also giving money to landlords. Why, what's going on there, Hugo? So let's see here. 23, CD 2.
General public comment.
Yes, so the CD public general comment today is, Kevin is going to be giving a mural to the late Fernando Valenzuela. Let's give Dodger fan Kevin a hand. There's never been a better Dodger fan next to the late Gil Sodio. Yes, I wish Gil was here right now, sitting in that seat. He'd be so proud of what Kevin's doing. And Nuri, I wish she was here too. She'd be so proud. But that's why you need to get out and vote for Kevin, because he cares about the Dodgers. You didn't see Unicez step up to pay for that mural. No, Kevin did that before the unfortunate announcement. Kevin was willing to spend his own money to give that fine man his mural irregardless. So it's not a political stunt. This comes from Kevin's heart to the community. Vote for Kevin DeLeon. He's the real deal, and fuck you, Amelda.
Yeah, 15, you guys are removing property from the homeless, the unhoused, just like inside safe. I've watched numerous inside safe clearing of encampments. I saw one without any notice, no notice to any unhoused. But, but what is really frustrating is you're alleging that there's services-
So, Speaker, this is not related to the rent escrow program, so you're welcome to speak to this during general if you'd like.
This is about the Los Angeles Housing Department, right? Item 15.
Item 15 is a rent escrow program item, so I'm going to move you to general public comment. You can continue speaking for your one minute for general.
All right. So I've been at gunpoint seven times by LAPD, seven times, all right? The Church of Scientology is a cult. One of their victims that was raised in Scientology is here. Hopefully she shares her story. Who is getting paid by the Church of Scientology to allow all those swattings on us? All the protesters, all the restraining orders that we beat? I just beat a case last week for protesting an L. Ron Hubbard wave that's been closed since June. Children are auditing men, asking questions about anal sex and masturbation. Who is being paid by Scientology on this council? How dare you allow Scientology to continue? And why is ZDT, the one calling in the swattings, not under arrest for saying he's going to rape a minor?
Next speaker.
Hi, are translation services in Korean available?
So if they weren't requested ahead of time, I do not believe we have a Korean interpreter on staff right now.
Okay. No.
But for anybody who would like interpreter services, if you let us know 48 hours in advance, we will do our best to have an interpreter here.
Okay, fine, thank you. I'm speaking on item 23 about the CUB license for 3300 West 8th Street. My name is Patty Wong, and I'm here on behalf of my parents who purchased a condo at 848 Arolo in 2010, which is within 600 feet of the location. Together, my elderly parents and I have gathered over 100 signatures opposing this license. It took us about five days working in the nighttime, daytime, and on the weekends. These neighbors work hard and can't take time off their job today, so I'm speaking on behalf of them. We've had local residents calling complaints to LAPD about noise and drunk people coming out of the front of this location, trash and vomit all over, especially within the last two years. The karaoke bar has been built out illegally and operating illegally with no ABC license, no business license. We know vice is rated a couple times to no avail. They always come back, and no one ever comes to assist the neighbors. We followed up with noise complaints. Been told there are just not enough patrols. The last thing we need in this neighborhood is this karaoke bar and the CUB license, so I respectfully request that you take a look at this and push it into a different committee further. Thank you.
Good morning. I would like to speak on all agenda items and public comment, please.
Good morning. And which name did you sign up under?
Audit LA.
Okay, so yes, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items.
Yes, thank you, sir. Okay, first I want to talk about the REAP program. It seems like we're losing a lot of housing that is much needed. One of them's in Mr. Martinez's district. So can we request that you search out other places that would be applicable? I can give you a couple of addresses. 4810 Sunset Boulevard. There's 500 rooms, I believe. Elevators, everything, very, you know, I think it's probably nice, except for the blasted planters that are not ADA compatible. There's also 4820 Fountain Avenue, which is a hotel. It's already a hotel. So that would be one that maybe we could add on to it. I would love to see that happen. So Mr. Martinez, those are two addresses. Please look into that to get those properties up and running for unhoused individuals. By the way, that's the Church of Scientology and their hotel. They have plenty of room because nobody's joining up anymore. Anyway-
So I need you to stick to the agenda items or I'm going to move you to general.
Yes, sir. The other agenda item I would like to talk about is the one with the liquor license. I personally just believe there needs to be a moratorium on how many liquor licenses we give out. Now, am I allowed to talk about why I feel that way?
So I do not believe this item's open for public comment.
You said it was.
Are you talking about, which item are you talking about? Can you identify? Is it item 23?
Can you pause my time so I can look for it? Because that's not fair. It's a liquor license, and it says that, I mean it, like, I want my time paused.
Okay, so I believe it's item 23. Can you hold her time for just this once? So when you provide public comment, we can't start and stop everybody's time when they're looking through the agendas.
Sure you can. If you ask me a question for point of clarification.
So we're going to ask everybody to please come prepared so that you know-
I was prepared.
Which items, hold on. You don't need to respond. This goes for everybody. So that you know which items and can identify which items you're speaking to.
I said all items.
Believe you're speaking to 23, so please start her time again.
What's the numbers? It was on the numbers that you, yeah, it was right. Hold on, pause. See, you're doing my time.
I believe it's 23.
23. Oh, there's another one. No, I can't find it right now, but there's an item there for a liquor license for a karaoke bar, and you took up a lot of my time. I don't appreciate it. The reason I don't want you to do it is because- The reason I don't want you to do it is because there's a, I've observed a lot on this, a bar with a liquor license, CUPs, all that called La Poubelle. Okay? And after observing them, I realized the city is zero on making sure that anyone follows their CUPs. Okay, so I've been had, I had somebody, I wasn't even doing anything but scooting by and I had a cigarette flicked at me. You're not allowed to smoke within 10 feet of it, you know? All kinds of things happening. So you guys are not able to do that, you know? I mean, you don't enforce anything. It's like lawlessness and, you know, and I just do, for God's sake, I do want to say that God is relevant for every, you know, on every item.
General public comment?
Thank you. Well, for my public comment, while it's great that nobody's here to listen to it, so I guess I don't know, does it really matter? I'm here to support Mr. Enry Marini. Okay? And thank you, Mr. McCosker. You're the only one, like you are the only one who listens and I appreciate you. He was, he is facing charges. He's facing jail time because they, the Church of Scientology had the entire encroachment of the entire Catalina where nobody could get in and out of their cars. I couldn't go with the chair, you know, out of access para transit and all he did was roll it up so we could get by. There was no permits for it. There was no anything for it. The people who put it there, the Church of Scientology, did not get fined, did not require to put permits, nothing, but he's looking at jail time. And I asked the, please ask them, it's a, this is a, it's a bogus, putting him in jail or trying to put him in jail or convicting him is bogus. Have them drop, Heidi needs to drop those charges now. It's ridiculous.
Hi, I'm Laura Anderson. I'm here talking against, attached with Enry and AuditLA regarding the Church of Scientology. I call it the cult of Scientology. I was a child born and raised in this organization. I was the, I was the child instructed later in my child career, you're not allowed to be a child in Scientology, to be hiding crimes, criminal assaults, rape, pedophilia through auditing of Scientology because they're religion. There are protesters every single day protesting the church, the cult of Scientology, like myself, who didn't and aren't allowed to speak to their family members anymore. I am demanding that the city look into the people getting paid, gifted money, and little donations from Scientology. If you know what I'm talking about, if you're receiving them, you're going to be exposed. Heidi, stop signing off on all those restraining orders.
Okay, so Speaker, your time has expired.
Well, sir, City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, your key op person, he's playing games with us to call in.
Okay, so Speaker.
And clocking us out.
Speaker, no. Speaker, listen before you, or else you're going to forfeit your time. Mr. Serrano, I need you to listen. I need you to identify which items you'd like to speak to. You can speak to the other item that you're trying to now during general. Okay, so for the first three minutes, you know the rules, please stick to the agenda items. You can continue talking about what you wanted to during general afterwards.
23, all REAP items, 23 and all REAP items, all items in general.
Go ahead.
With that being said, 23, alcohol licensing. If you're going to allow something, you should be the one attentive to what number it is. Don't ask the public and speak on their time to address what number when you know it's on the agenda. That's your job to be on top of because it was on the screen. You just didn't know, but you didn't stop the time to ask the question. Be attentive to your job.
So this is your last warning. This is not on the agenda. You can speak to it during general if you would like.
Alcohol licensing. You just told a woman that she was not on topic. Because you didn't know what it was. Be attentive to your job. Protect the city, not the council people.
Okay, you've been asked politely multiple times. I'm going to move you to general public comment. Go ahead, you can continue.
No, no, keep me on, no, REAP items. Keep me on REAP items. Don't go to a public comment yet. REAP items.
You were on general public comment. You were asked politely multiple times. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, again, your key op person keeps booting us off. De León, if you're going to wear a Dodger jacket, why don't you wear a Goyer bag or a black child on your other hand? Have to be more representative of who you are. That's what you spoke to, Mr. Election. Don't do that. And then you went and called out your, the person running against you for saying fuck the police? There's a lot of sentiment about that. But Officer Podesta, the 77th, I feel the same way about them, not all PD. Most of them are great people. But again, Jezebel, don't worry about him. He's just bringing attention or deflecting the attention to his Goyer bag situation when they wanted to oust him. God bless everyone.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next caller?
Councilmember Padilla, I want to talk about yesterday's committee meeting. I haven't seen someone chair a meeting with that kind of venomous disdain for the public since Nury Martinez or even Mitch Anglender. They at least limited themselves to outbursts. You were consistently rude. It was like those two spawn the demon babies. You just regularly interrupt people when they have 10 seconds left. That's the most hectic time in trying to wrap up your comments and you're interrupting them for no good reason. Councilmember Hernandez is buddying up with you and speaking over commenters when she's neither the chair nor the city attorney. Bro, you got to talk to the city attorney about that because they're not holding their time and that's not appropriate. You guys not understand that Finler, Herman, they want to trigger you. Like have a little bit of poise. Grow the fuck up. You're feeding into what they're trying to do. Do you not get that? Are you that thick-headed?
Speaker, your time has expired. Next caller?
All right, so, so you all, any of you going to issue a statement on Kevin's racist outburst yesterday during the council meeting where he was, you know, yelling about how people, making comments about how people protesting him for being racist, you know, black people protesting him were being disrespectful and rude? That's kind of racist to say that. So you should all be making statements on that. Yesterday, while people were disrupting because you refused to hear the last two in-person speakers, the LAPD decided to be racist and discriminatory in how they removed people and specifically targeted the only black woman disrupting, targeted only her for removal. Only black woman disrupting, everyone else was just kind of, was disrupting, was just kind of ignored. So it seems like that's kind of being racist in how they're removing people. So that's kind of interesting.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
Yeah, hi, DanielGuss.substack.com.
Good morning. Which items?
All items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, like Richard Serrano said, yeah, REAP deserves to be spoken about there. You guys do some good stuff, but like those REAP items and other stuff, you should be moving your three hours of presentations from last week to the nuts and bolts like the REAP items. It's important. It's good work, but this circumstance where people can't comment on those REAP items, and I can be specific if you want me to, Mr. Groth, the stuff that you're dealing with is what you have sown. You are reaping what you sow. I'm going to go to general public comment right now.
Okay, so you have one minute.
General public comment and there will be a story on DanielGuss.substack.com very, very soon. Does the city realize that its chief veterinarian, Jeremy Prupis, is about to quit and you do not have a backup plan? Mr. Hernandez, I warned you. Mayor Bass, I warned you. And your chief veterinarian has warned city officials someone is going to get bit badly. You are worried about liability and lawsuits. Your chief veterinarian is telling city officials someone's going to get bit badly and I have proof that city officials have lied about receiving these warnings. Mr. Krikorian lied about receiving these warnings and I'm going to prove it. Mayor Bass's office, they lied about receiving warnings. Forget about million-dollar settlements. You're going to be paying tens of millions of dollars and guess what? You keep putting on vendors and commissioners.
Mr. Gus, your time has expired.
And consultants that you have no...
All items and general public comment.
Okay, good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Okay. Item 16 is for the removal of 2857 East Cincinnati Street from the REAP account where criminals like indicted Kern Price and Sleazy Marqueez Dawson regularly confiscate properties for personal gain. In my opinion, this property should receive a yes vote so they cannot steal it from the owner. On the other hand, in my opinion, this item should receive a no vote if Sleazy Dawson, Sleazy indicted out on bail criminal Kern Price and our unelected Heather Hutt are allowed to vote as I believe the property could end up in one or all of their names instead of the owner. Item 17 for the removal of 467 South Armaz Drive property from the REAP account. The REAP program for this property should be used to assist the property owners, but the incompetent self-serving black criminals of this corrupt government use it to steal properties for themselves. In my opinion, this property should receive a yes vote so they cannot steal it from the owner. On the other hand, in my opinion, this item should receive a no vote if Sleazy Dawson, corrupt indicted out on bail criminal Kern Price and/or unelected Heather Hutt are allowed to vote as I believe the property could end up in one or all of their names instead of the owner. Item 18 is for the removal of 15046 West Dickens Street from the REAP account. In my opinion, this REAP program for this property should be used to assist the property of owners in maintaining ownership of their property. However, the incompetent self-serving black criminals of this most corrupt local government in the history of the US used it to place liens and steal the property for themselves. In my opinion, this item should receive a yes vote. On the other hand, in my opinion, this item should receive a no vote if Sleazy Marqueez Dawson, corrupt indicted out on bail criminal Kern Price and/or unelected five-bi Heather Hutt are all allowed to vote as I believe the property could end up in one or all of their names instead of the owner. General public comment.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Is anybody out there? Thank you. Is anybody out there stupid enough to vote yes on any, any of these propositions to raise their own taxes so our corrupt government can squander more? The LA Sleazy Council is the most corrupt local government in the history of the United States. The black community has zero representation from these incompetent, corrupt sellouts, self-serving indicted black Uncle Tom criminal members of this corrupt city council. Petty pinkface corrupt Armenian dictator Clu Clux Krikorian appointed Sleazy Marqueez, the most corrupt of them all. Public black faces occupy 20% of the Sleazy Council and county, yet black people are nearly 50% of the homeless, the incarcerated, and the unemployed. Why? Sleazy Marqueez Dawson is currently behind a scheme to sell the black community state EDD unemployment office building on Crenshaw Boulevard for $1.
Caller, your time has expired. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. Well, I did want to share some words to adjourn today's meeting in honor of Fernando Valenzuela, who was an LA icon and once-in-a-generation talent who passed away yesterday at the age of 63. Just over a year ago, we had the honor of hosting Fernando in chambers to proclaim Fernando Valenzuela Day and commemorate his incredible legacy on and off the field. Fernando was the embodiment of Los Angeles and he inspired countless immigrant families who saw themselves in him. He was an underdog who was overlooked and underestimated. He was born the youngest of 12 in a small pueblo in Sonora, Mexico, where he first learned the game of baseball. And he was known for many things, including his unique pitching style, in particular his signature screwball. And over the years, his talent and tenacity led him down an unlikely path all the way down to Dodger Stadium, where during his remarkable 1981 season, he transformed our city and Major League Baseball forever and helped the Dodgers turn the tide against the Yankees to take the World Series title. That same year, he became the only pitcher in baseball history to win both the Cy Young Award and the Rookie of the Year Award. In the process, he captivated a generation of fans, becoming a global sensation and inspiration to communities from LA to Mexico and beyond. And not only was he a phenomenal baseball player, a six-time All-Star, a game player with incredible athletic skills, he became and is a source of pride for Latinos and Mexicanos all over the world. My tia went to Dodger game for the first time in her life this year and she shared the story of her and my grandpa getting into baseball and listening to the Dodger games in Mexico because of Fernando Valenzuela. And so he has made an impact, a lasting impact in our communities. He created a cultural bridge and broke down barriers for a new loyal and diverse set of baseball fans. We must recognize that Fernando not only made an indelible impact with his pitching, he helped revolutionize the relationship between baseball and Latinos that we see thrive today. We all know the mark that Fernando Mania left on Los Angeles, but his legacy off the field was just as potent as it was on it. Fernando Valenzuela was kind and gracious, as humble as he was talented, and I think we all got to feel some of that when he was in chambers with us and we are very lucky for that. Fernando leaves behind his wife Linda, his four children, Fernando Jr., Maria Fernanda, Ricardo, and Linda as well, and countless friends, grand, seven grandchildren, extended family, and fans all across the world who shares his spirit and mourn his loss. I ask that you keep his family in your prayers. May his memory be a blessing to all who knew him and may he be resting in the warm embrace of his ancestors, in our ancestors. And this World Series is for number 34. Thank you.